I'm the testing accountability director and that's takes up the majority of my time. So I guess I'm kind of the contact between the school system and DBI as far as testing is. Mr. Matheson's already mentioned about the ACT and so we're going to that March for the state assessment that every school in Carolina does. So we're in that March also, we'll be doing the ACT option assessment starting that same time period. There's a super and Ms. Walsh has already mentioned about the check-ins. Apparently for the year-long classes were in process to do a check-in number two. Actually, believe it or not, even though the high school just started here just a few weeks ago, biology has already done check-ins one for the second semester and the math one, math three, and English two will be the other part of check-in here coming up very soon. We have a student that scored perfect on the check-in of for biology.
Wow.
Yeah. Actually, I just pulled in the scores this morning for the Earth Science, eighth grade science scores that Ms. brought me that one day, maybe Friday. And I noticed on hers, I'm not saying they never either four or five scores ever. So we're thinking pretty well with that. One thing that has not been mentioned so far is, you know, for our students that are English language learners, those that's what we call the HEAL program. Every year, starts at the end of January, runs through the beginning of March, we do a national test in the consortium called access testing. And basically that's kind of measures your progress. You'll have our students that, you know, when they enter our school, you know, their language at home is something other than English. And so it just measures their progress every year. So we're currently, Ms. Schrauber and myself, we are working on doing that assessment right now. Really starting near the completion of that. And then the only other thing that I was going to mention to you was that for the retesting program that we always do after, you know, we'll do the EOGs, EOCs, you know, of course they're in money. But we also have a summer program that we do every year where kids can re-date the test after some remediation. I have to have a board proof plan sent to DBI by the first of April. And so at the next board meeting, I will need you guys to take a look at the plans we've started working on and hopefully approve that plan where you get that submitted to DBI for approval. So that's why I had to mention.
Thank you, Ms. White. Next is Adam Bailey of Carolina School Board Association, video training series that the board is considering purchasing. So explain.
Yes, so the last board meeting, Ms. Knott mentioned that there is a video training series that's provided by School Board Association. I believe the cost of that is fifteen hundred dollars a year. I would just like to give them some discussion about whether or not that if you think that's a viable resource for the board to purchase. I'm assuming that we will look at that for the purchase for the next school year because it's not prorating. We did find that out, so we've got it now, so we're putting it down, fifteen hundred. It does have a series of mini-training videos, some of the hottest topics that are going on. It also could be something that we could use teachers or administrators could also view the webinars and we could give CUs for that if that would be something that the board chose, it would be more interesting for the board to look.
Well, I talked to the, when we went to the training, I talked to the lady about it and of course she was encouraging us to jump on now because there was a lot of good videos. But she did say that, you know, we would have a user ID that all school employees could get on and watch the videos and maybe even during a workday, some teachers could get together and watch some videos and get some CUs for that. And they can do that on their own time. Of course, Ms. Knott has to do some work to get that, to get that going. But, you know, that's a possibility and apparently I think it would be really good because you can watch it on their own time. And especially if anyone can access it, I mean, anyone can access it, that's a school employee, and get some CUs if we go that direction.
It's a continuing education, you know, so we, each teacher, each administrator has to have eighty hours of online training and that's how we access that.
And I know they go to conferences and they, there's things that you have, like their training, they get credit for that. There's things in the high school, but there may be some workdays and apparently there's some really good information on there. She said there was going to be some information on there coming up about, I think about government legislation and some things like that. Of course, there's a video on there right now about parents' rights and that's one of our, that's one of our policies that we're going to look at today. But so I agree with Ms. Knott. I don't think it's worth jumping in now with the way our companies do it, to certainly look at it. And apparently it runs from August to June, I think. I think it was August to June. It's fifteen hundred dollars.
Do we need to make a decision today?
No, but rather than having a continued until the morning, if we choose to, I mean, we could, but.
Can I make a suggestion? Because it's going to be for the teachers and the principals and stuff that would be benefit. Can we just like give them a chance to say if they want to?
I think that's a good idea. How do y'all feel about it?
I mean, I know a lot of times for us, it's hard for teachers to get the CUs that they need over the five-year period. So that gives them something in-house that they would be able to go on and look at and receive those credits for it. So I think it'd be positive for me myself.
I mean, and teachers could actually, three teachers could get together on a workday and maybe watch two, three videos and it's, and it's an access that.
Is there a way to document like what they've watched within the program?
Yeah.
We have to work with them. We're in the School Board Association and they actually assign the credit, but she said that we could work that out to do that.
It would be easy to track.
It would be easy to track. I do think that it would be a benefit to educators because one thing that we really don't probably ever get opportunity for them to hear is, you know, the board gets some liability training, some things like that. We really don't get as much of that out to educators and a lot of this would have to do, you know, with our board policy. So I can see where it would be an advantage.
Definitely have to understand why some things are the way they are and have to be that that way. So I think it's just.
And I think not only as the teachers, I think as an administrator, it would be helpful to me because it's really hard to be out of the school. I mean, I don't like going away to stuff and being away, so I think that'd be not helpful.
She indicated to me that it didn't necessarily, it could be any school employee, didn't necessarily have to be an administrator or.
Exactly. I think what Ms. Walsh was saying is particularly for administrators, it would be great.
It's hard for us to take up.
The school system wanted to know about parents' rights. It was. I think it's, I mean, we could try it for a year and see how it went and let teachers know that they could.
As far as from a cost perspective, I have one and we could cover it if that's what the board chose to do.
It would be fifteen hundred dollars for the next fiscal school year.
That's great for the next fiscal school year.
Well, and another positive could be if we look through there and you see some initiatives that we have that's happening in-house with, you know, I don't know what might be on there, but anything associated with mental health or, you know, a good teaching strategy for vocabulary or whatever might be.
They won't have those. It's all policies.
Right. But, I mean, even still, if it's answering any of those questions or mental health, what is the school liable to, you know, supply and what are we not, what's the line? You know, if there's things in there that, that you decide that's something that everyone needs to do, you know, to get a certain credit or whatever, then that could be something and then we could know, just like with that mental health training, it's a standard that we can say that everyone in our district has knowledge of whatever this is.
Well, I think anybody would want to know about parents'.
Parents' rights, yes, for sure.
Anybody would want to know about that.
And I know that that's a huge part for us. Anytime that you see in that Title I parent right to know, that should serve to help with some of those grants to say that all of our teachers have had access to that kind of thing.
What's up going on with the way it's like you're writing all about parents' rights?
And that's the reason she said a lot of things were going to be thrown on there when now and when they quit, I assume that there was going to be, it was really, there was going to be a lot of need on there, but I don't see that the fifteen hundred dollars with our situation, it would be worth it. Because we need to try to educate our teachers on what and our staff on what we're doing. And I think within that span of time, we'd be able to time to let people know.
So it won't cover all of our education. Their continuing education, but it'll cover some.
It would some.
That cost effective to you or to me?
Okay.
Another discussion.
Is it fifteen hundred dollars a year? Like, is that a subscription or is it fifteen hundred dollars per?
It's a subscription.
Okay, so the whole school system of fifteen hundred dollars.
That's correct.
Wow, that's great, okay.
And it's in the budget to purchase?
No, it's not, but we could, being that we will be building a budget soon, we could build it into the budget.
Is all the health of teachers and staff on board?
Well, and we can watch it also. I mean, it's, I'll try to catch that.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make a motion that for the next school year that we go ahead and put it in our budget to purchase the video training series provided by the North Carolina School Board Association for next year in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars, which would run from August to June and would be able to be accessed by all staff members.
Second.
All clear.
All clear. That's unanimous. Adam C., Mr. Matheson, CTE equipment purchase.
Yes, so through technical education, we're starting a new program next year. We're going to have an ag program at the high school and as part of that, this school year, we were able to convert several months of employment through ABC transfer. And so I have a pretty large sum of money and the purpose of converting that money through ABC transfer was to be able to start up the agriculture program. One of the necessities that we have is a farm tractor that we need to be able to purchase. And we have three bids here for farm tractors. The first one is from Nelson Tractor and for, it is a Kubota, thirty-nine horsepower with a front-end loader, a sixty-six inch tiller and a sixty-inch bush hog. And it is thirty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars plus a trailer. The total would be forty-one thousand, six thirty-five plus tax. The other bid that we had was through Western Carolina Lotta Tractor. It was for a Massey Ferguson, forty horsepower tractor. And you can see the total bid for it was forty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety plus tax. And then Agco and Murphy gave us a bid on a John Deere compact utility tractor that's thirty-eight horsepower. It would have a sixty-inch tiller, a sixty-inch rotary cutter and a trailer for thirty-six thousand, one hundred. After the, I did some research on these along with Ms. Nikki Stewart, who is currently in school to be an ag teacher and is filling in for Ms. Walsh as an ag teacher in the middle school right now. And our preference would be to purchase the tractor from Nelson Tractor for forty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars with the trailer. That tractor, it comes with a little bit more safety things already that are included in the price. For instance, like when you have a front-end loader, they have to put counterweight into the wheels, into the tires, and that's all included in that where it was in some of these other prices. And the warranty there was just a little bit better also. So I'm asking for permission to purchase a farm tractor from Nelson Tractor.
Any questions for Mr. Matheson?
Just like he's done his research.
All right, I'll then return the motion then to approve his request to purchase the tractor from Nelson Tractor.
Okay, I'll make a motion to purchase that.
Second. All clear.
Mr. Matheson, do you have an extra one of those to give Sherlina?
I do.
So it should be.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're also going to be building a barn. I don't know if I've mentioned that to y'all, but the on-campus stuff by the bus garage and I don't, the way, the way we're going to do it, I don't think I'll have, Ms. Knott's giving me permission to use the property there, what we're going to use, but Mr. Parron will be doing that with the summer program. So, and we'll be able to pay for those kids to work through PRC 177, which was a summer, summer funds that was given to us last year. There's some carryover there, so we'll be able to employ four or five kids and a couple adults to build that barn. So we're excited about that.
Sleeping beds where those stakes are at.
That is correct, yes. And there's going to be an area there that we can fence in, you know, so when we have livestock on campus, we can have a place to let them out and we don't have to sort of keep them installed all the time. So we're excited about the ag program. That's what we really do really well.
Sounds good. Ms. Knight, fiscal year twenty-four audit firm recommendation.
Yes, each year it comes to the board for you to approve our audit firm. The recommendation from Mr. Grant, who is at a training right now, is to continue to go with Anderson, Smith and Watt as the audit firm. They've done a really good job for us in the past, very comprehensive, and that will be his recommendation at night.
Any questions for Ms. Knight? All right, I'll then return the motion then to approve her request. Second.
Second.
All clear. I'll bet you naps. Let's go calendar, me and Ms. Knight, fiscal year twenty-four.
All right, I am seeing your way, a proposed calendar. You received this on your email as well. And this is a compliment for you, good luck. And all of our staff have received this as well. Each year, the calendar community comes together to work on a proposed calendar for the upcoming year. In front of you, you have that calendar. It very much mimics the outline of the calendar that we had this year, just so happens that the days fall similar. One set of good compliments that we've gotten from families and from staff is that we've tried to chunk some days together so that you either have a couple of teacher workdays together and over a long weekend, so that way families do get a chance to get somewhere, maybe they can plan for those long weekends. So we put this out to the community as well. It was out on our district website. It was on our Facebook page. We have a total of three responses from the public, so you have those in front of you. And there have been a few from staff as well and we've tried to address those. But I'll give you a moment if you want to look over those questions. There are for the, for the purpose of the new board member, some of the questions are, well, can we start at the school a week earlier so we can get out earlier? Well, we wish we could. Y'all talked about that this morning, why I can't recommend that to you. Attorney Davis, whenever the pending court case for one of the school systems in North Carolina that has requested to do that, I would prefer to somehow put the board in a pending court case position, although we would love to start earlier, but it's not going to be an option. So the closest that we could start school with a weather waiver is August 21st. The reason that we do the Christmas break like we are is one of the suggestions was could we change some of those days around Christmas break, but we need to have as many student days as we can in that first semester so we can get as many instructional hours in at the high school as we can. So that's why Christmas break is, is why it is. And then that's essentially what the comments were.
You're still short, so.
You still are short. First semester is always short. It's tough. It really is.
I will say that we have made a very strong effort to have as few testing classes as possible in the fall semester. For instance, this year, we had no English two in the fall and we had no ag one in the fall. So that way, during the spring, when we have more instructional days, we do have a few biology and a few math three, but most of our testing is in the spring.
The way that this calendar, actually the days spell, there are actually two more instructional days in the upcoming calendar than there are even in this year for the first semester. So we feel like this was a good proposal.
I have a question, Ms. Knight. If legislation was to change, because I know there is that footage and there has been, this could be revisited?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, before the school year?
Yeah. We would hope this legislation's going to change. It can change quickly because I know families set vacations, staff sets vacations, those kind of things. So the wheels usually don't turn as quickly as we'd like, but if they do, you as a, as a board have an opportunity to change the calendar.
Did your feedback come from your staff? Is this the public or is this?
This is public. Staff came back on email to me through the county community representatives. I had two, I only had two questions. One was about, Mr. Matheson may be behind this, one was about this is changing spring break so that they can have a week for turkey hunting or something. So I don't know. I don't know if he was, the other one that they did was a question about why there were some, why we chose to put the required workday, like we did it at the end of the calendar. And part of that is because of our, our, Mr.
Required retesting.
Required retesting that Mr. Watt was talking about. That allows us to do some retesting right while we've got our whole staff here. It's very hard to ask our staff sometimes to turn around after they're exhausted for the school year and turn right around and come back in and do retesting. So we just found it easier to do some of the retesting while we have on here. So that was the only concerns that were brought to me from the staff. So those two.
So for the most part, they were happy with it?
No, yes, absolutely.
Except for the turkey?
Yeah.
The turkey's a bad.
The turkey's a.
If I can show one with a slingshot, they can do it during, over behind middle.
Drive behind with the.
That's right.
Other questions come in? All right, return motion then to approve fiscal year twenty-four school calendar?
I make a motion to approve the calendar.
Second. All clear. That's unanimous. Personnel, Ms. Knight?
Yes, turn close session. I'll bring you a slate of personnel for several positions.
All right, and then last on the, I'm going to turn the page here. Ms. Banks.
Your board policies for second reading are attached to your agenda. And on policy forty-four hundred, attendance, I'm going to ask that you not approve that one today. I'm going to put it on the next board meeting, but we're going to tweak it a little bit more. And the tweaking would be a predetermined time to cut all dates for excuses. Then what you're running into is eight months later, you get an excuse. So, well, so at any rate, let's exclude the attendance. I'll tweak that, put it back on for a third reading. And then I'm also going to request, Ms. Lee, I'm going to drop that too. And then, just the truth, that's, these are ready for scrutiny if they make room.
Ms. Banks, a minute. I'm sure, hey, you said something about the attorney general getting a different address, something about confidentiality, something that?
There's a protective program.
I wrote something down, but I want you to tell us about that.
That's.
And that's on student records.
Policy forty-seven hundred.
Yes.
The purpose of putting in the attorney general's address confidentiality program in this policy is that if a student has that, you have to honor that. And it may be in Virginia, where you sit in the document, that's what they do right here.
But then you said somebody was getting different addresses or?
They can, if they qualify for the attorney general's competition.
Okay.
They have to qualify. And I actually had my first feeling with the gentleman.
You told me that.
Yeah.
I don't think we've actually had a bill with her this school.
But you're just supposed to honor, by putting it in here, you're now required to honor it, even though it's not your address.
All right. Is there a motion to approve policies as, Ms. Banks?
All the policies that we've, except attendance.
Except attendance.
Except attendance.
I'm going to tweak that, read back next.
Just attendance.
But I should be good to go.
Motion to approve this.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. All clear. Close session. Motion to go into closed session.
Pursuant to the provision of North Carolina statute one forty-three dash three eighteen eleven, parentheses A, parentheses two, I move that the Graham County Board of Education go into closed session in order to, in order to prevent the premature disclosure of, I found the wrong time. I didn't sound right. Pursuant to the provision of North Carolina general statute one forty-three dash thirty-one eighteen point eleven, parentheses A, parentheses three of one forty-three three eighteen eleven, parentheses C, I move that the Graham County Board of Education go into closed session to receive advice from Ms. Ellen Davis, attorney for the Graham County Board of Education, which advice comes within the purview of the attorney-client privilege. The advice will be general legal advice about legal issues and legal matters. Pursuant to the provision of North Carolina general statute one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, parentheses C, I move that the Graham County Board of Education go into closed session for the purpose of considering personnel matters as defined in and allowed by the North Carolina general statutes, one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, parentheses A, parentheses six, and the North Carolina general statute one fifteen C dash three twenty-one.
Persiana?
Yes.
All clear. It's now a closed session.
Child nutrition part-time employee, Jay Tisotaski.
Is there a motion to employ Jay Tisotaski as part-time?
Yes, I make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All clear.
I recommend in the position, in the grant position for nurse extender at the elementary school, Erin Tisotaski.
Second. Second.
In the position of middle school exceptional children teacher assistant, I recommend Brittany Chicalily.
A motion to hire Brittany Chicalily?
Absolutely.
All clear.
In the position of elementary teacher assistant, I recommend April Moorfield.
Second. Second.
In the position of transportation department assistant, I recommend Jody Green.
Motion to hire Jody Green from the, what part did you say?
Transportation.
Transportation. Second.
I'll second.
All clear. Nams?
In the position of middle school math teacher, I recommend Tucker Kay.
Motion to hire Tucker Kay, math teacher?
I make a motion.
Second.
Second.
All clear.
In the position of instructional substitutes, I have three names, Hannah Eller, Ashley Brooks, and Emma Wiggins Crowe.
Motion to hire these three subs as listed by Ms. Knight.
Second.
Second. All clear.
In the position as twentieth century after-school worker, as one of our staff members already, Gracie York.
Motion to approve Gracie York. Second. All clear.
And volunteers, I have five names, Emma Nichols, Leah, Coby Crowe, Carson Watt, Brittany Chicalily, and Hunter Jones.
Motion to approve those listed as, Ms. Knight?
Absolutely.
Second.
Second.
All right, all clear. Nams? All right. Announcements?
So, yes, so your next board meeting will be March seventh. The regular meeting will be.
The regular meeting will be at ten A M. There will be board training at eight A M. There are a few upcoming events that you might want to put on your slate. There's a polar plunge event coming up on February eighteenth at three P M. I'll be glad to sponsor any of the board members that would like to join.
Mr. Nelson's not here, so we can vote on that.
There you go.
That's unanimous.
We also have, are being able to return science night this year. That's going to be on March twenty-third from six to eight at the high school. We're exciting, we're excited that that's going to be able to be back. The elementary school has rock and read coming up the week of March twenty-seventh through the thirty-first, and there'll be a parent night, part of that. And then we have a new event this year coming up that the Noble Knights are hosting. It's, we're going to call it Spring Fest, and it's operating for vendors, from the local vendors, to come to the high school. But there's also going to be a chocolate tasting event with that. In the past, we've had the Valentine Chocolate Festival. So this is the same thing, just it's going to be at Easter. And so it's going to be on Saturday, the first, so you'll be seeing some things from this part of that.
Anything else? All right, motion to close the closed session. Second?
Second.
All in favor?